This conference will now be recorded.
I like to call the meeting to order. Planning Board regular meeting for Tuesday, September 16th at 6 o'clock. Our first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the August 19th, 25th meeting. Do I have a motion for approval of the minute?
Make motion to approve August 19th, 24 minutes.
I'll second that.
Got it first and the second. All in favor? Aye. All approved? The next item on our, for tonight is the administrative site plan review of 301 WB McLean. Jean, I'm going to ask you to take over for us on this issue.
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. Be glad to see, you'll see in your packet right behind the cover sheet memo, a response from CEC to the technical review comments. Remember, we moved this process here a month or two ago, where each individual agency had a chance to comment and they were able to provide responses. So I'll just run through these real quick. And then we have Molly Redman here with us as well to answer any questions that you have tonight. Molly joined us online last time, if you recall. She's, she's traveled to be here with us tonight, so. Western Carter Fire and EMS, Bob Penrod had no comments, Carter Craven had no comments. Environmental Health, Amy Guthrie had no comments. Department of Transportation did have a comment about stacking, and they have shown eight, eight vehicles stacked there on per menu board. Carter County GIS had no comments, West Carter Order no comments, Coastal Management no comments, Cherry Point no comments, Building Inspector no comments. So we had two comments, one of them was just kind of a blanket comment, and we've not approved any signage for this site yet, but all signage does have to, to meet, you know, the requirements of our ordinance. And then we had one about parking, consistent with one, with section 14, 11.6, category A, one space for each four seats. And so it does meet that requirement, and they did, did include that on the revised site plan. And then the planning board had two comments here. One is, we'd like to see the approved plans for handling Septic. And Septic, they responded to Septic Design Enforcement, can be found on C600 of the series of plan sets, and that Molly is willing to discuss these plans. And then the NC DOT requirements, eight vehicles, as far as stacking, which, which they've met at this point. So I'd like to allow Molly just a second, if it's okay, and then y'all opportunity to ask her any questions that you might have.
Sorry. That's just a question I have.
Is that big enough for you? Payable?
I brought them for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Molly. We're all supposed to get a copy of the plan.
Should I grab a table over here so we can, in the middle?
Did you give a copy for each one of us?
Need a hand? That's what I was just thinking.
I just figured it was easier to, to the table and spread it out on.
There's two clear slides out here, so y'all receive copies in your email. Unfortunately, we don't have a large format range, so I couldn't read this for you, so. But Molly can say a few more.
Yeah, so I think. Zoom in, just in and out.
Max, can you see it?
Make sure too, when you speak, you speak into that, so if there's anybody at the house they can hear.
So I brought big copies for you guys to also see. I know there was questions on the Septic design, about tearing up the pavement that's out there, and we plan to do, to bore it instead of tearing it up and putting it in. So there will be little pits that we have to put pavement back into, but we're not tearing up the entire run, just what is the minimum required. And it does go behind that shopping center.
And does that show exactly which way you are planning on boring on whatever page?
Yes.
So I think it's 600.
I got kind of lost in all of the pages.
Yeah, there's a lot of play in there.
This is, this is the road that just got paved.
No.
Now, this is that road?
This is.
Yep, in between.
Oh, so this is in between Walgreens, that's the one that just got. And then this is going in between the buildings, I'm assuming right there.
Very to be underground store line. Yeah, that goes.
That was my question, how y'all are getting, making sure that we weren't going over and destroying another road over here that just got fixed, and now we're back in the same avenue we were before.
Basically, we have the direction.
So once you, so you run a bore, from all the way to, then you have to have a pit, so you can change your direction. Yep.
At some point, and this, this permission doesn't hinge on this, but at some point, because the plans were so difficult to read in this format, we need to see where all the Septic is. We need to see easements and repaired areas. So it's gonna be dry, and we're all in, after it's.
They should, they should take it down though, so that there's not any concern with it being dilapidated or, yeah, or crushed, you know.
But that would be from a different, pardon, y'all, y'all didn't even know.
No, we're not gonna do this. Understand, but I'm just saying from a town point of view, it'd be very good for us to have.
And we got several. I just. I just know where everything.
Did they bless me?
Amy wrote that, that's helped purpose, if she would have ruined their Septic.
So in other words, what she was saying was right there again, these, these, showing these little stripes.
It's your comment that they didn't have.
Yes. Well, they could say, I reviewed this plan.
So it ran where there's a ditch.
I think, I think we need less.
What was the purpose of the, obviously, I'm trying to hold difference. I guess her question was.
It's not necessarily for.
Well, ask Jean.
Yeah, and I think that was her question, why would the repair area be so long somewhere where there is a.
That puts more responsibility.
You know, when there's already a square or a alley or, you know, like, why was it, and maybe it's because that's where it is.
Worried about the ditch.
So the red area is.
You're good.
Yeah. Really, I don't, unless the comments really follow them, I don't agree.
Well, I don't understand the difference, well, I'm just asking, the significance of the rail is because the green on the side. So they're basically putting, that's kind of.
But I guess the question is, is the soul different type?
It's gotta be.
And it's red, it's a different type, is it better?
They diverted into the natural ground area.
We may divert it here, you're saying?
Why, why does everybody else have? We're talking about.
So on it?
Yeah, I think so. Yes.
No, I was just. And I was just curious, like, what was the reasoning behind it? Because I didn't.
With the grinder.
Next time, they need a better choice of pellet.
Because of the parking lot here, it's all, it's all paved.
I understand what, what she was saying, because it was red. I mean, red means stop, right? But yes, on engineering plans, when it's engineered, I mean, when seawalls, docks, houses, I used to all the time go and get seawalls, you know, that, I would be told, no, you can't do it. And I'd take it to the engineer and hit stamp, and I could bring it back and say, hey, guess what? I'm sorry, but.
Wonder how many people they did this.
It goes back to the engineer. Exactly. It goes back to the engineer, and that's why they go to school and get paid the big bucks. Yes, and they know their math, a whole lot better than I know their math.
We love our engineer that we work with.
Yes, which one do you use?
Stroud. I need an engineer, because I want to. Josh will pick up in Harvey and Jeremy's suite.
Yeah, you, you pick up your phone and you call it. Well, everybody would always pick up.
I need you to bless cutting my trusses.
The colors were thrown in.
I want to put in a door with it.
You're your.
Well, I've got to have engineer because you got to cut your truss.
If this is.
Yeah, because new for my trusses. Pre-cut trusses, so we're gonna have to.
And this, and they make the lines also.
We come give me an estimate already, I've got the money.
Are you ready to sell the house yet? Well, just go ahead and build you a new one beside it. I mean, I.
Let's build you a new one, that's not easier.
I literally have, have told her.
Well, if she gets her land set, I probably will.
Or buy. Or buy. That's heaven to bet.
Okay, and I got something.
Do you wish David? Miss Heaven the Bestie?
I've got somebody that wants to dance. Custom house.
I got, I got.
Somebody else you gotta talk to. And like, there's a difference. I said, we're thinking about Cadillac and, and, you know, not even, I don't.
We had a little two bed.
So do you have any questions on this? Because I read, only thing I didn't understand at first was, was the Septic. And then my next question was science.
I got attached to the house.
Because if they're boring, you know, here.
But all the trees are.
I mean, not, I'm not a conservative scientist, I know it has to be.
Except it's just above.
Yes, but there's already.
You want to call her, she said, you want to buy?
You know, we're getting ready to get a whole row.
She said, no, I got half tank for. So I sold my concrete house.
It just has.
You know what?
Next to the.
I had already prepped the lane.
And it's already in such a.
So I spent money on a new land that already came.
That's what I hope.
It wasn't a.
See it? I'm just hoping, I'm just hoping that, and it's not.
I looked at that the other day.
We all need to. The only thing about signage, I'm sorry about like, some right, right LED signage. But you know, if it's over, I would see, I think better than a.
You know, where these people say, no comment, thank you.
The year you're.
We have reviewed it, no comment, thank you.
Natural, so it's just natural.
It's 2008. That, that was just from.
That was my question, too. And my next question is that people's walking here, you know how steep it is.
You've got, you've got a grease trap in your plate.
Are they gonna make?
Have the business, because I had one.
People wouldn't drive all up there. But yeah, you're not going to be able to get by.
Really? I would ask, and I would, oh my gosh, things leaking, and call Ricky Taylor, they come out and got.
That's correct, that's correct. But cars coming.
And it was pushing the land up.
But during, but during the summer.
I didn't know what a grease pit was.
All the way up, because where's the beginning? We're starting here, right? Yeah, I'm saying, we're coming in this way, right?
Yep. Oh, I had it.
And so if we're coming in here. And so somebody comes in here and they go, oh wait, they might not want to.
Oh, you're, you're so.
That's the question. Yeah, so do we just, like, yeah, bring us back orders? Do we need Vinnie to bring us back orders? Because there's a couple. You want me to do it for you?
Can we call the meeting back to order and discuss it together on what we reviewed? Bigly helpful. All right. I knew y'all had the opportunity to speak with Molly and review the plans. Anyone like to have any discussion on any issues? Ms. Holtz? Thank you, Madam Chairman. Prior to last month's meeting, I received a copy of the engineered plan dated March 4th, 2005. And this plan called 44. Fifty-eight seats, 58 seats. Now, I understand that this plan was revoked, and that you have a new one that has been approved, but nobody's seen it. I haven't seen it. Has anybody on the board seen the new plan?
No.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to see the new plan, and how many seats are you planning to put in this restaurant? All right, and that's on the record?
Yes, it's on our site plan.
Forty-four seats?
Yes.
Okay. When might we expect to receive a copy of the approved engineered plan?
So my question, and not to rephrase your question, but I have a specific question to this. So we got notification and reached out to you.
Mm-hmm.
That very.
Yes.
And permit, the Septic permit.
Correct, yes.
Is that because of a change in engineer?
Yes, so at, when we first started the project, the seller was going to design it with his engineers, but then that engineer decided to not move forward with the project. So we've had this design with our engineer since you've had the plans.
Did the engineer record change as a reason for replication?
Correct, yes.
That's amazing. And do you have a new approved plan that you can send to us?
Yes.
Specifying 44 seats.
It's from Amy, right?
Uh, yeah, I have it in my email. I can send it to you directly after this meeting.
Regardless, regardless of this, now, I want to make a point of this. Regardless of if the Septic, approved Septic permit shows, it can show 100 seats on it. The site is still limited to 44 seats, because that was what was approved, is part of, is part of the site plan. I just wanted to point that out.
Okay, yeah.
Sure that everybody understood.
As long as on record, it is X number of seats, then it is X number of seats period in the statement, right?
So Septic, Septic, of course, is based on occupancy generally, and so, you know, the occupancy could be greater, but there's other things that hinge on this, as far as traffic control and parking, and all these things could hinge on, on, on all these different things. And so I just wanted to point out that the site plan that you're, that you're approving tonight, or disapproving tonight, either which way you decide, is based on 44 seats, which is reflected on the site plan.
Does that, does that agree, Molly, with your plans?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so, and then the, the next one is, what happens if after you get a CO, somebody were to walk in and count 50 seats? What would happen then?
Um, I, I don't think we would do that.
I'm asking, yeah. So there will not be any more seats ever than 44?
No.
There won't be any stuck outside on a patio or something like that?
So generally, and, and I know where you're going with this, generally, what would happen is if we were to go to any establishment and it wasn't compliant with the approved plan, we would revoke the permit. You can't operate without a permit, you have to have a permit to operate.
Yeah.
And so in that, that case, they would have to come back and get approval for whatever that change was to continue. That's a very difficult and litigious process.
Right.
So I want to point that out as well.
Yes.
So I hope that they'll comply with the 44 seats that's, you know, being considered tonight.
And I would think that if that ever happened, they wouldn't do that simply to, due to the fact that every day they're closed, that's thousands of dollars that they have lost in revenue. I mean, that's just one of those things that I, you know, you know, as a business, you know, owner, I would hope you would, and I don't think y'all would.
So we're going to get a copy from Ms. Gunther, she's got no comments in here on the new Septic approval.
So this is a, this is a state permit, instead of a county issued permit?
Right.
The county would have a county permit, but would just ask that when y'all get a copy, if you'll forward it to us, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, of course.
And so it's already been approved at state level? The new Septic?
Yeah.
And you'll send us a copy since you have it tomorrow?
Yeah, I can send you our permit.
Um, one question we had was going around the menu board. We noticed that it has the 13 seats, amazing, great, and that the parking is on either side of the entrance. One question we had was the natural area there being a barrier, should the menu board drive-through line be blocked for people to be able to access either side upon entering or exiting? So you kind of, I know that's hard to describe.
Basically, you can't do, loop all the way around.
All the way around. So should you come in here and need to access this area, or go back out, you're now blocked here?
That was just a question on how.
Due to the natural area, this doesn't have another, you know, lane for people to go, loop all the way around.
Because the hill's so high coming up on the natural area.
You'll have a pass lane.
Is that something that could be accommodated, or?
Or a concern. I know we've talked, you know, had responses from fire and, you know, EMS and all of that, and there's no concern there. So for me, I'm like, well, if they didn't see a concern.
Then, then it's a.
Then there's not, then there's not, but just from a personal standpoint of thinking about, that was one, the one thing that kind of was brought up between talking amongst ourselves.
Yeah, so typically, we only show seven cars for Taco Bells. The extra cars were just to show the DOT that we would not back up onto the highway, no matter what we did. I, I think that answers your question, kind of. We expect seven cars, the extras version.
That place that says here.
Did you see what we're speaking of?
Until you go July 4th weekend.
You're underestimating how excited people are about Taco Bell.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Have you ever been to McDonald's on July 4th, you know, where it's like wrapped around the building three times? I mean.
So Molly, what we were asking, is there a way, even if, let's say a car breaks down and it gets backed up?
Okay, so it comes to you.
Is there a way that anyone could get past those cars, or?
Um, I think that's the benefit of having two entrances mainly.
So, so the, the question really is, so once you get in that, engaged in that drive-through lane, really engaged, there, there's, there's no way to get out without the car in front of you, or the car behind you.
Taco Bell. And it's an emergency, yeah.
Yeah, that was just a question, because you know how people get irritated, mad in line, and this is taking too long and wanting to get out of line. Well, in this case, they're just going to have to learn patience, I guess.
Maybe it's on purpose.
Maybe, maybe.
Maybe that's a universe provided them without learning experience.
Patience, patience is a virtue, right?
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm asking, would y'all, would y'all like her to, maybe see if she could figure something out for that area?
I'm okay with the two entrances, now knowing like the seven cars is what it's, it's expected, and the fact that there's two entrances, I just kind of wanted some additional information on that.
Yeah, I was lost with all the cars coming around. It's kind of, I'm like.
It's a lot of cars.
Well, you got, you know, you got cars coming out of the park here.
You got to keep it simple for me.
Go in here. If you're, you're number 10, 11, or 12, you're in there for a few minutes.
Kind of think about the Taco Bell, you know.
I've made many passes by the Taco Bell in Swansboro this past week.
Yeah, and look at any.
It's been my research base.
You need to look at the sign, the sign as you go by, or, or just pull in, do a loop around the park, similar to that, same thing as well.
Good model to go off of.
I'm sure a lot of people will, will be very excited for you to be here.
Any other questions for Molly?
I have none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Holtz, did you want a copy of that engineer before we proceed with approval?
Yeah, the state approval.
So, so can I speak to that real quick? Because I want to keep y'all, like.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
So the state approval is either a yes or no. Either they have it or they don't. So like we were talking about with the engineered option permit, we don't have any say so in that. Either the engineer stamps it and the state accepts it, or the engineer doesn't accept it. So if it's the will of the board, and I'm not saying it is, but if it was the will of the board to approve, intention upon us having that permit in hand, or approved permit in hand, I would make the motion like that, and we would, we wouldn't issue a permit until what time we had that permit in hand.
And, and as long as that permit specifies 44 seats, 44 seats. Because the one we have, and you say the only difference is the change of engineers, but the one we have that I received from a courtesy copy from Carterick County specifies 58 seats, and I want to be sure it says 44.
So in my, in the motion, I guess we need to do contingent.
So I want to speak to that, to that too. So, and even if, if Molly needs to, to readdress this, so the permit's law will come in and say that this restaurant can handle 58 seats, but that's not the only thing. This can, the only approval is based on this number of seats. There, there are multiple things that are on this. So even if the permit, so if the permit came in and it said for 43 seats, we would have an issue with the plan for 44 seats. If it comes in for 58 seats, we don't have an issue, because it has the capacity to handle this amount of stuff. But I think it's good on the record, and, and, and what I'm, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm capturing, what I'm cautioning us against is that engineer that's on that system to hold as much. So he's not going to say it will actually accommodate 58 seats, just because that says 44. The permit's law will not say 44 seats.
I wish you accept that. There are other issues at play. The DOT, so I don't want to confuse the issue by approving or receiving a Septic permit for 58, when we know DOT only wants 44.
So, so how do you argue that? Is that plan is labeled forty-four seats? So if there's any variance from that, and that's, that's what I'm getting at, so even if the septic permit says fifty-eight seats, plan that you're considering tonight says forty-four seats.
And that's what we have to get by.
So if it's forty-five seats, there's no approval. They, they have to come back. If there's, you know, forty-three seats, it would be fine because that's.
Less than.
Right, but, but, but what's going to happen is that, that engineer that designed the system is going to look at it, and he's not designing it specific to, he's designing it for more than forty-four seats. So the permit is very likely.
I understand that. I just want to be crystal clear. Well, what's it looking at? It's doing a, a trend strain. It's going to be, uh, and then a pump, basic, I guess, a septic pump.
It is, it is.
And, um.
They, they saw.
And I know Amy said she had no comments on this, but if Carteret County, the reason she has.
And, and just to make sure that's what I was told.
It's on the state approval, but does Carteret County have the blessing?
No, 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 no.
So it's two different processes.
Right, right.
I know, I know a hundred percent of the state that the law is.
Now, last month, when I called Amy Guthrie, head of Carteret County, like environmental, she just gave me a courtesy copy which she had received, just a courtesy copy, which I looked at, and that's where I picked up the fifty-eight. But, um, but it was two different issues, and I understand that as long as we're talking about forty-four seats, which puts them in compliance with the DOT requirements. Now, in two thousand and eight, uh, they're closing that system off. Why is that reasoning for that? More cobia. System, drainage system.
Don't have a foggy subject.
Quick question for you, these, uh, when were the comments made? Were they made after seeing the revised plans?
So the comments would have come, and the, the revised plans would come from the comments. So we would send the comments, yes, so, so that the flow of events would, we, we got the plan. Um, we, we send, we usually send this out to everybody. We'll wait until after that planning commission meeting so that y'all can review it, see if there's anything else. On Melissa's, it's just a simple, a simple plan. Um, this is more complex, it's a site plan. But then the comments would go to them. They would return, um, answers to those comments and a revision if it was warranted. Then that's what, that's what you have for you tonight. If you look on the, I think it's about the third, fourth page back, um, the plan, the site plan is labeled for forty-four seats, right in the fifth center of the.
But now, Molly, did you not say that this is the same plan?
The septic is the same. There, the, we addressed the comments and got all the comments addressed.
But the.
But the septic system has not changed.
The stacking has changed.
Correct, yes, yes.
So I'm going to make a motion with the plan in front of us, and I'm not exactly sure quite how to label it. Current plan, um, stating forty-four seats. Trying to figure out how it's, um, meeting all other guidelines?
So, so you could, any, any other state, federal guidelines and making the approval contention upon having that, that approved plan for septic?
Septic from the state and any other state or federal guidelines with a maximum number of seats of forty-four. I'll make.
Yes, sir.
So that would be my motion. Just have to have a second.
Is there a second?
Um, I want to, DOT on the eight vehicles per lane, why was he?
So what they were doing is making sure that traffic didn't back up out onto the road. So that's, that's what that's stacking.
I understand that, but she put in thirteen cars, right, in the plan? And it would be no bypassing. Would there be bypass, can you bypass with eight? Seven?
Seven, yes.
Seven, yes.
So seven can pass.
I don't think you're going to be able to, to fit, you know, there's places that you sometimes can't go around.
Okay, Jeremy's made a motion for a state approval permit to be brought forth?
So Jeremy's motion was for, um, was for approval conditional upon us receiving an approved state permit or septic, and all other local, state, and federal regulations being met.
As with.
With forty-four seats.
A maximum, maximum of, you can have three if you wanted to, but a maximum of forty-four seats.
Okay, like, anybody like to make a motion?
Seconds.
We got a second.
All in approval?
Maybe, still got to have a second if somebody's going to.
I thought you seconded.
Oh, I was letting you know we needed one.
You were letting me know what?
We need one.
Oh.
We need a second to, to then go.
Anybody like to make a second?
I'll make a second.
Second, all approved? Okay, Ms. Molly, do you understand what we're requesting?
Yeah, you, I'll also do the permit when I get back to my computer.
Thank you.
And I'm sure that, you know, she'll clean up my motion a little bit.
I think you did a fantastic job.
No, I didn't, I didn't.
We're going to just.
I didn't exactly know how to word it. State, federal.
Somebody have my two sheet out there?
Thank you. I, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't figure you did, so, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Mike was looking at it. Does anybody have my two sheets? My man has the front of it.
Uh, I sent something over. You need to get back to. Okay.
Their punch. Sure. Okay. All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm holding on to them. Thank you, if that's okay.
And I'd like your card, please, and I'll swap you with mine.
And in signage, I guess later down the road, y'all are coming back to the signage part. Are you staying till the end of the meeting currently? Are y'all leaving or what?
It's, I'm sorry, sir, what was your name? Okay, and? Flynn Group?
So if y'all go hang out for a minute, this next item, it should not take but just a second.
And Molly, where'd you come from to get here? Where?
Denny Island.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Did you fly in the Jacksonville?
I did, yeah.
I'm on Kentucky, Ohio, and so I know where you came from. I like flying into Jacksonville. We thank you very much for being here at the meeting, and, uh, we're welcome, trying to welcome y'all to come into town. We got to protect our town too.
Ready for the next item?
Yes, sir.
All right. So the next item on the agenda tonight is an amendment to, or proposed amendment to the runoff prevention policy. So at last month's meeting, I mentioned to y'all that we were having some, some issues and we wanted to, to take good practical action with this. The issue is, is really with under construction. Um, so I received in my first two months here, received multiple complaints. Um, and we had pretty heavy rains, um, back in June, July, um, of runoff, whether it be in the street, in the creek, or in the neighbor's yard, um, and have another one I went and looked at this past week that's going to be an issue. So we, we know that. So right now, we require silt fence. Um, and I'm, I'm going to breeze through this real quick to get to the, the part that is pertinent here. Um, so this is a separate from our stormwater section. So it just says it, uh, it's this town, uh, policy of the town to limit runoff from any developed property to the amount of runoff that would naturally occur prior to development of the property. We all know that, you know, if the, the property is, um, is vegetated and you take all the vegetation off, water has to go somewhere. So, you know, in that instance, we, we have silt fence, um, and other things. So prior to the issuance, any permit, you know, we're going to, the appropriate, um, permit officer shall examine that. So, um, that's, uh, that's the next, that B section, and that making sure that we minimize potential, um, adverse impacts from that. The C is the added, so you'll see in red on the next page, um, and this is the, the amendment that we're proposing. This is kind of where I'm seeing the issue right now, and Ryan Hutchinson is seeing the issue right now. So, once construction or land clearing has begun, the permit officer or public works director shall complete under construction inspections to ensure compliance with the above requirements. If in the opinion of the permit officer or public works director runoff is excessive and/or is not contained to the site to the extent practical, the permit officer may require additional best management practices. Failure to contain runoff shall constitute a violation of the, of unified development ordinance. So all that means is at the end of the day, I can serve you with violation, um, if you don't comply with this. Most of these situations that, that we're seeing, um, here recently are where the folks went out and put up silt fence. So the silt fence was there, but they didn't maintain the silt fence. So the silt fence got knocked down. It's like, guys, just please put your silt fence back up. In some of the areas, you know, where there's a, a change in elevation, there was a rush of water to knock down the silt fence. Guys throw a bale of straw or something out there. So I'm not trying to put a regulation in that's over, overbearing, but just allowing us some teeth and, hey, I will take your permit if you don't, you know, don't help us keep this runoff on, on this site as, as much as practical. So that, that's the.
One, go ahead, sorry.
Move to approve?
I have one quick question, just, just. Okay, we want to approve, then discuss after?
No, the procedure is motion, second, discussion.
Okay, all right.
Right. And I'll second? And now we can discuss it.
Okay, sir. Uh, my only question, no, I agree a hundred percent. We actually need, you know, to, to keep everything out of the water because it's been a nightmare. My only question is, in the future, can anything that's been put in here be used as leverage the way things have in the past against different people because this person, you know, this group didn't like this group? You're, you're understanding what I'm saying, though?
And so that's why I put it, and I did it very purposely, in, in the opinion of the, the permit officer. So if I go out there, Ryan goes out there, and it's like, yeah, this is just one person complaining against the other, I, I don't see anything. We're going to report back, hey, we didn't see.
Okay, all right. You understand what I'm saying because.
And that's real.
Yes, all the time.
Yeah, it's real.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
With them looking into it, like, obviously Ryan will be looking at flood zones, is there anything that would be done prior to submitting that permit that would regulate? This is going to be a lot concerned for runoff due to a flood, and this is going to be due to grade, you know, anything that'll be done prior to that?
Yes, and so our stormwater, um, section ordinance has those requirements in it. This is, this is just where they've complied with that, but then there's not enough.
And that's kind of what I felt.
And it's, and it's really common sense stuff.
Unfortunately, common sense.
Yeah, unfortunately.
And we have, we have discussed this prior.
Do we need to clarify the fuel process on this or?
So if, with there being a, a violation of UDO, then the fuel process would fall on that same thing?
Same.
Same thing.
Now, now, what happens if something, same violation was multiple times that?
Revoke the permit. It's a violation of UDO.
That was my question. I just want to make sure. If we went out there and somebody put a Band-Aid on bullet hole today, and then tomorrow did the same thing after, you know, eventually after third, fourth, fifth time, at what point do you say, okay, come on, fix this right?
Yeah.
Or don't proceed?
Or I'll take the permit.
Okay.
May I ask, is this going to help public works out a little bit? I mean, I know that, how hard they work, you know.
Well, I mean, the, the burden is not theirs. I can tell you that, that, this is, this is not affecting their workload at all because whenever we have instances like this, they just report it to me. So that's, that's the, I mean, they're not, they're not going out. It's my burden. It's not something that they're going out and enforcing on people. Public Works is just a set of eyes because they're on the road all day and I'm in the office most of the time.
I know that.
Well, when you get ready to get in the boat and all of a sudden it's poured and you see this yellow streak going down the middle of the canal, and it's like, oh my gosh.
And that, that, that's been two of the reference instances.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we've had, we still use water pumps to help the water flow? It's probably going to help. Okay.
No, you need the responsibility of the contractor.
Yeah, no, the contractor. But now is there, is, that's a good point. Is there a timeframe? And I know, sorry, I'm making this a little longer, but is there a timeframe to get this finished? And in other words, like if you say, hey, you know, it's pouring, you know, and it's coming down, two days later, it's still not done, I mean.
So we're reasonable. Usually I go on slide and I say, hey, help us out, we need you to do this. And then, you know, four, five days later, it's not done, you get a letter. The next thing is, then it's the revocation of the.
Because obviously, we just want it fixed.
Yeah, we just want.
We don't, we don't want anything passed, just go fix it because we don't want it in the water.
Because if I revoke your permit, you're not doing anything, and then it's going to be worse. So that's not what I, yeah.
We just want it fixed, it fixed quick. Okay, all right, thank you.
Um, Jeremy, I think, you know, if we start this process and then a, a time issue becomes an issue.
Then we can deal with it.
Then we can deal with it.
Yeah, no worries. I'm, I'm, less is more. I agree.
Yeah.
You have a motion to accept?
Make a motion to approve?
Do I have a second? I thought I made the motion.
Yeah.
You just need a vote.
We just need a.
Is everybody in? Is everybody in agreement?
I'm so sorry.
Did we all vote?
Yes, ma'am.
You got, you got that look in your eye. Let's say something.
All right.
Um, do we need to complete the statement of consistency and reason?
Yes, we do. Well, I think we just approved, uh, the consistency.
But is this, does this fall under this one?
Commission found and determined that this request is consistent with the goals.
It definitely is consistent.
I think we just approved that.
It is consistent.
Well, it is consistent.
It definitely is consistent.
We just approved.
Yep.
We have to say why is it consistent?
It's consistent.
It's consistent because we want to keep our.
Clarifies an already established.
Okay. Who would like to?
Yes, the, allows the authority, I like that, the authority to actually act upon a found problem, a known problem.
Correct.
An error that is bigger, I think.
Or an area. Okay, the consistency is what?
It clarifies.
It gives the authority.
And provides authority.
Clarifies and gives authority. I like the authority there. Authority to rectify.
Okay, Jean, is in this statement a consistency of reasonable, reasonableness for the commissioners?
It is, and if you'll see, it's written, um, written like that. So all you're doing is making a recommendation of, of this. So you're offering them some verbiage, um, is all you're doing, is offering them some verbiage to consider. So, and I'll be glad to read that if you'd like me to.
So, in mean, in other words, has clarity.
We're going to read it and, and provide you some examples.
Sure thing, let's hear it.
Yeah.
I like it.
Yeah, so, so, so this would be your recommendation to the commissioners. The commissioners find and determine that the request is consistent, not consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of town of Cape Cod, as comprehensive and Camel Land use plan. Um, because protecting water quality in the town of Cape Cod, it is consistent with the goals, policies of both the comprehensive and Camel Land use plan, for the big line.
Yes.
So it is reasonable and in the public interest. Again, water quality is in the public interest, and these are, this is a reasonable, um, reasonable ordinance amendment. It's not overburdening, but should accomplish, um, accomplish a great deal.
And it does not violate the UDO. It supports.
It supports it one hundred percent.
It, it allows you to actually.
Have the authority.
Put some in force into it.
Absolutely.
And then it's, is in the public's interest a hundred percent.
So if y'all would offer those statements to the commissioners, I'll, I'll take them at their next meeting.
So moved. So moved. Well, do we have to vote on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Is everybody in agreement with the statement for the commissioners?
I am a hundred percent.
So are you seconding our move that we accept?
I, I will second that.
I'll second. I'd second. All right. All approved. I'm brave. Move slow these days, okay?
Thank you.
Now that we need to make sure, do we need to make a motion to adjourn?
We do.
No, no.
I'll sit.
Is, who would like to present the report to the commissioners?
That's my wife's birthday weekend, so I'm on that.
I'll volunteer. Would you volunteer?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Holtz.
Vice chair approves. Speak. Okay, Jeremy.
Oh, does the planning, anybody have any comments? Planning board members' comments? Staff comments? Okay, I make a motion. Oh, sorry, go ahead. I don't.
Ms. Holtz has a comment.
Yep, go ahead.
Still haven't been paid for resurfacing golf and golf drive. We're going to put it, we'll put a bucket out at the festival. Thank you.
Can we put, um, pretty soon you can get out there and get a, you know, a whole road.
Yeah, yeah. Put a, put a gate up. Oh, and I will report to the board that the, the dilapidated condemned trailer on Live Oak that's been condemned by the building inspector at the town manager's request was in the process of being put in a dump truck by Boggs Sound Septic today. Huge improvement. How about it with the cars down there?
In the garage, probably. The garage was two.
I do too. Because it took me, it took me two years since I get that car moved in the second garage.
So, the plan I'm told is for the garage to be kept.
So, all we cared about is the last part of the structure being gone.
I know, I know. But, but it's. Now, this, this new ordinance that we hope the commissioners will pass on will very much come into play with that canal behind it.
All, really all the canals.
Yes, yes.
And I should comment on that. We just really wanted a way to, again, apply some common sense to this. A lot of these literally are, get your silt fence back up, which I can do already, you know. Or you need three bales of straw right here. Please put three bales of straw here to keep the water from running in, you know, to slow the water down long enough to infiltrate in the back. But it's really easy stuff.
Can I real quickly ask one question? Okay, so right now we have no wait zones, buoys in a few areas. Can I ask why they were stuck directly in the middle of the channel where in some cases on low tide, when we're coming through with our boat, we can't go around them because there's not enough water? Just curious.
I did not place these or have anything to do with the placement of these, but I'm very familiar with the process and the placement of these and it would not have been my choice. So, can we put those back out?
Back out, can we?
Yeah, we'll, we'll adjust, so.
Perfect. And I would even be willing to go out on a boat and with you and that slider and we put out buoys where you want them to be placed would be wonderful.
That would be the most fun. Anyway, we do, we actually did that with the county. So, the county, the county actually managed every ten no wait zones throughout. We poured our own weights. We did all that. So, we're going to start doing it like that. We can, you know, it's, it's just, it's ordering the buoys, it's putting shackles and chain on them and shoving them everywhere in the right place.
Yeah, because right now, the other day I actually did move one, just to let you know. I'm sorry. I was like, I've got to get through here, so.
Forty-two?
What's that? It was on towards your side, yeah.
So, I typically like to see them on the offshore side.
That's correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, you put them on the offshore side, you put them on the edge of the show, you got something to look at too. I mean, there's, there's.
But in this case, it was just right in the middle. I'm like, I, I got to move it. I can't get through otherwise.
Yeah.
Just to let you know.
We'll, we'll, we'll get them next time.
Sure, thank you.
Make a motion to the chair?
I'll see you in town.
Bye.
Good meeting. Thank y'all.
All approved.
Hang on to something today. I'll get his email address. And I want to.
Thank you.